Hello. I call this meeting to order at seven thirty eight P M. We'll start with the roll call. Vice Chair Andre Tessman.
Present.
Chris Ailiff.
Present.
David Goodman.
Present.
Daryl Lambert.
Present.
Neera Smather. Steve Smith. And then I'm also present Luke Maruziak. Have you received any communication from Neera's Commissioners Mathur or Smith?
No, we have not.
Is the email sorted out with Commissioner Mathur?
Um, hold on, so the person, this, hold on, this attendee raised their hand. It may be one of the Commissioners. I just don't know who they are. Hi there, I just un- Vox's PR dash J H attendee, I just.
Oh, that's me. Sorry, I don't know how to change my screen name.
Ah, here, let me promote you.
Thank you. There we go.
Sorry, when I see weird names, I don't promote people.
That's Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Clearly his cellphone or something.
Here we are.
Very good.
Okay.
So has IT been able to sort out Commissioner Mathur's email?
To my understanding, yes, IT sorted that out. But I haven't heard from him. So we, what we can do is I can attempt to get in contact with him again with his personal email as well and, and phone number.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and do that? But I'm glad that we've got other than Christian Mathur, a full slate today. Definite, definite improvement. So while you're doing that, I move that we approve the agenda as written. Can I get a second?
I can do.
Fall in favor?
Hi.
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 Closed? Okay, are there any public comments for items not on the agenda? Hearing none. Move on to the council liaison report.
Uh, good evening. Uh, I really just wanted to say that I had a ton of fun at our Snoqualmie Days event. Uh, the other day, or the other day, I guess a couple of weeks ago now, uh, I just saw so much community involvement and uh, it was wonderful watching the parade go by and seeing vendors and all that. And also, uh, there was on the same morning, uh, the pancake breakfast at the, uh, Snoqualmie Fire Department, uh, which was a lot of fun. Um, that's really all that I wanted to mention for now. Uh, so thank you and have a good meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for council member Johnson?
Wait a minute, I forgot. I did have another thing. I'm looking for, uh, where the, um, oh, where the email is describes it. Or. Okay. Uh, boy. Sorry, I should have had this pulled up ahead of time. There is going to be a special meeting, and I really wish I could find this, of, uh, the, um, of the Community Development Committee, uh, and, um, uh, I believe the rest of the councils invited as well, but also the Economic Development, uh, Commission, as well as the Planning Commission, uh, which will be in two weeks. And, um, oh, man, I hate to do this. But, uh, Community Development Director, do you happen to have the information handy real quick? Because I can't find it right off.
Yeah, Jason, would you mind bringing that email up?
We've got a flyer.
Nice.
There it is. Thank you so much. Yeah, so this is going to be a joint hybrid meeting. Uh, yes, that's great. Thank you. Uh, that is going to cover, if you scroll down just a little bit, there we go. Um, a short course on local planning. Uh, so it's going to cover the comprehensive plan basics. Uh, it will cover, um, uh, some of the open government laws as well. So if any of you are still in need or your, um, uh, your, um, what would you call it? Your certificate, certification, I guess, what's the word?
Yeah, we, we, we are required to have a to, to get training on open government laws.
Right.
And it's not a certificate per se, but we need to, we need to do it.
Yeah, exactly. I believe it's every four years is what the rule is, uh, or what the law is. So, um, yeah, if you haven't done that yet, if you're new to the commission, you haven't uh, had the opportunity, this will be a great time to do it. Um, and it will be starting at six, is that correct? Yes, it's six o'clock. And, uh, you can join remotely or here in the council chambers. Thanks.
Excellent. So one more time, any questions for Councilmember Johnson? Okay, with that, we'll move on to approval of previous minutes. So we have both May second and May sixteen minutes. I move that we approve both sets, May second and May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, planning commission meeting minutes as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ask for, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any votes? Okay, then, let's move on to the permit review and design review board.
Uh, we don't have any items for that tonight.
Is crab commercial not on the agenda today?
That is from probably the.
Okay, never mind, I'm looking at that wrong thing.
That's from a prior meeting.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, I can pull the agenda up if that would be helpful.
Yeah. I was referring to that for a different reason. So no items with the appropriate designer review, appreciate it. Uh, legislative policy items, regulations, as seen at this time. So, uh, other business. So first, downtown relook update?
Downtown really up to.
That was passed by council.
Oh, sorry, right. And I'm just being reminded. So the, the downtown relook that the planning commission worked on, uh, for quite some time was approved by the city council recently. So thank you all very much for your hard work on that. Uh, the council was also, uh, quite appreciative of, of that. There's nothing further to do on at this time. You recall there were a number of other additional items, uh, but the council has not asked for the commission to take a look at any of those. Um, so if that changes, we'll certainly, certainly let you know. But other than that, thank you very much for, for all your efforts over the last several years on that.
No, that's good to hear. That's really good to hear. Okay, uh, two planning commission priorities?
So for planning fishing priorities, this is, this is something, and, and I know that, um, the chair here, let me turn this off so we can see a little better. Um, has had some discussions with, with the director, um, about priorities. The Community Development Committee earlier tonight began discussing their, that committee's priorities, which, um, to, to sum it up, largely focused on affordable housing as the first, second, and third priorities. Affordable housing, attainable housing, workforce housing, uh, as the saying was going. Um, that is something that the, the council itself is going to, uh, work on at their level. Now that they'll certainly be asking for input from other other community members, other people with expertise, but that's something that, that they have expressed desire to say, they're the, they're the elected officials, they, it's, it's their responsibility, they're going to work on it. There are, however, some other items that they discussed that they will absolutely be seeking the planning commission's, uh, work and input on. One of those would be, um, in, in, looking at an integration of the of the Snoqualmie Ridge areas into the city's general development regulations. So as, as you all know, right now, the city has the zoning code, which covers effectively the valley floor of the city. Snoqualmie Ridge one and two have their own separate set of development standards, and also they also operate under, uh, the auspices of, of what are called mixed use final plans. Um, as we reach or approach build out of, of these areas, um, the usefulness of those plans and those development standards starts to reduce substantially. And there is a, a desire, uh, at least among the Community Development Committee, to work to integrate those into just the regular zoning codes that we can start treating the Snoqualmie Ridge, uh, in a more, in a manner more consistent with the rest of the city. So you don't have these multiple codes doing different things in different areas of the city. Um, so that's, that's one work, uh, work item that the C D committee has, is looking for. There are some additional efforts that are likely going to be potentially a little lower priority, um, involving looking at, um, at some opportunities to, to perhaps increase density in some of our residential areas to accommodate more housing, which could hopefully be affordable, uh, perhaps, um, uh, you know, things like corner markets. Um, that's again likely to be a little bit lower priority simply because there are, you know, with, with the affordable housing discussion is, is a highly important one, which is going to require both a lot of council's time, but also a lot of staff time. And then, um, as the Community Development Department staff works to support both that effort and the planning commission's efforts, um, there's only so, there's only so much staff time to go around. And so we need to, you know, the council is being mindful of, of not trying to overload the, the, both the planning commission and overloading the available C D department staff. So, um, that, that's a bit of a preview of coming attractions for the planning commission. And I don't, I don't know if Chair Johnson has anything you, you want to add. I, I'm giving the very high level overview of, of an hour and twenty minutes of discussion.
Yeah, I think you pretty much hit the highlights. Uh, the only other thing that, um, we're, we're looking at, uh, down the road, not right this minute, uh, would be a relook at um, some of the regulations in the historical design review board and tightening up some of the language to, uh, just make it more clear what it is that the historical design review board is supposed to do. And to perhaps give them a little bit more teeth as, uh, the former Community Development Director used to say, um, uh, when they're making their decisions, uh, things like, you know, what is a contributing building, just making it as explicitly clear as possible as to what you're supposed to use those for and what they mean and all that stuff that just, um, uh, it has been a point of confusion in the past, and I think could definitely help in the decision-making process of the, uh, historical design review board, which is, uh, for us, uh, the planning commission. But again, they'll, they'll be down the road because priorities are important and affordable housing and some of these other things are higher priority.
I, I think to add to that a little bit, one, one thing the plant commission is likely to see very soon is some, uh, we would call them procedural code amendments related to how the historic designer view board functions and how it reviews projects. Um, this is, this is an outgrowth of some of the, the things we have, I identified this year with regard to the process and how, and how that designer view process works. And, and then, of course, how, how some of the appeal things work. Um, so those will be focused on procedures and not so much on the substantive, you know, you know, the color palette, for example, it's not going to, we're not going to look at the color palette. It's, it's just focused on, on how do we process these things? So it's a bit dry admittedly, but it's also important. The bigger, as the, as Jerry Johnson was saying, the, the bigger more substantive issues are, are going to have to be slotted in as, you know, as allowed by, by the priorities. So, um, we certainly want to get to it, but it may not be immediately. I don't know if you had anything to add to any of that, Emily, as well. I don't want to.
I did have a question, and I, I could certainly defer it because it might, I don't want to run on the big conversation. But do we have a clean definition on affordable housing? What is affordable?
So, so in in, in general terms, affordable means housing that is somebody who, so it is housing that is a, that somebody who is making eighty percent of the King County area median income is capable of buying or renting using up to thirty percent of their income.
And what is the median income at last look?
A hundred thousand in, for a family of four in King County, it's roughly, it's a hundred thousand and change. It's quite high. Uh, I don't have the number on, uh, uh, right in front of me, but it, it's a lot.
So, so again, as you run numbers, affordable housing is housing that somebody making eighty thousand and above can afford.
Correct.
Okay.
I do, I think there is, um, maybe just a more general term about affordable housing in Washington, meaning residential housing for rental occupation, which is long, which, as long as the same is occupied by low income households, requires payment of monthly housing costs, including utilities and other telephone of no more than thirty percent of the family's income. And that, that comes from, uh, chapter forty-three, one eighty-five A of the R C W.
Right, but the income is still defined as for the rent as, um, as the median of King County.
I think they're just saying, hey, when you combined all that up, it, it, it shouldn't be more than thirty percent of your family's income.
Right, but at what threshold though?
Can I, can I jump in here? Is that all right?
Sure.
Um, so, so when I, so there's sort of, somebody once described it to me as capital A affordable housing and lowercase a affordable housing. Uh, lowercase a affordable housing is kind of the general, um, topic of housing affordability and doesn't really refer to anything specific, but you know, the, the HUD, the, um, Department of Housing, Housing and Urban Development definition of housing that is affordable is housing that where somebody is paying thirty percent or less of their income towards, um, uh, towards rent. Capital A affordable housing is housing that has some sort of income restriction on it. Um, so oftentimes the, the levels are, uh, housing that's affordable at eighty percent of area median income and, and thirty percent of area median income. So, um, usually the, there's sort of like one, one or two levels in an affordable housing development. And, and when someone applies to live there, they have to do an income verification that shows that they're at or below whatever that income is. So, so the you know, the kind of whatever the King County median is, like, only matters so much as, as the denominator of um, the calculation of whether it's eighty percent or thirty percent, um, which, which, all of which leads me to ask what what's kind of the, um, the universe of things that the council might be looking at in terms of, um, affordable housing?
Uh, Chair, may I respond?
Yes, please.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so that is yet to be defined. So thanks for asking. Uh, I think that it it has the potential to cover, uh, both capital A and lowercase a affordable housing. Um, so the way that I would think about it is that, uh, we could, uh, tackle the issue with capital A affordable housing with, say, a specific development that could occur. Uh, or bringing in, uh, Arch, uh, which is a wonderful program that works elsewhere. Maybe it would work here, maybe it wouldn't. Um, so those would be the kinds of things that would be very specifically targeted to the legislative aspect of affordable housing. Uh, whereas, uh, for housing affordability, that could be the small case A, that could have to do with things like zoning, uh, housing density, increasing the supply of market rate housing. And that's just your typical supply and demand. Um, so if we were to increase our amount of housing, that could have an effect on housing affordability. So you have a lot that has, uh, one single family home. That's going to have a certain price point. If you had that same lot and you had two homes on it, making it a duplex, then each of those units uh, would cost less than that one big single family home, at least in theory. So that wouldn't be specifically making sure that it's only a particular group of people that can afford it. You would just be tackling the issue as a whole. So my point of bringing that up is to say, as we go into, say, the comprehensive plan, uh, in, uh, the near future, um, and looking at what our housing policies should be with regarding to, uh, with regard to, uh, residential zones, that sort of thing. Uh, then we would be attacking the lowercase a housing affordability.
Commissioner Goodman?
Um, I, I had a question about the zoning portion of it, so and I'll, I'll allow any, you know, want to give space for anybody else to ask a question or comment about the housing first.
Uh, yes, uh, CDC Director?
Uh, yeah, I would just also say, you know, along with, uh, lower, uppercase and lowercase, for lack of better, um, way of expressing it, there's also just, uh, the definition in the R C W is for low income housing, which means a single person family or unrelated persons living together whose adjusted income is less than eighty percent of the median family income adjusted for household size for the county where the project is located. So then that's where we get into those, um, A M I's.
Hmm, okay. Okay. Is anybody else have anything before I go back to Commissioner Goodman? Hey, go ahead, give extra good.
Thanks, and I'm, I mean, maybe it's, seems like this isn't really set in stone yet, and either, but, um, I, I certainly understand, I, I guess my understanding was that the, the, um, the development agreement that was in place for um, for the ridge is sort of in force for a certain number of years. Um, and, and I'm, I guess I'm wondering, I guess, can the council just sort of vote to say we're not doing that anymore? Um, and, and the other is, I, I certainly understand wanting to bring it, you know, wanting to have one zoning code, but you know, the, the ridge is, you know, significantly, I don't know, four or five times larger. And I, I wonder if it's going to be like a whole new thing, or if, if we're just gonna, just gonna try to, um, tweak the existing code to fit the ridge, or, or how, how you all foresee that going.
So I, so I think taking tho- those couple of questions there, um, so with, with regard to the ridge, I, I think the exact parameters of how we would do it is, is something that's yet to be determined, you know, uh, in C D committee, I use the example of we, you know, we could create three or four or five or six or however many we need new zoning districts to accommodate the type of development that exists on Snoqualmie Ridge, you know, so you, you may have one one zone that covers, say, Center Boulevard, another that's going to cover the, the more multifamily housing in the neighborhood center. Then you're going to have a different zone to cover the areas along, for example, Fairway, just because the, the, they are developed to different densities and different styles. Um, I went, you know, another alternative, as you point out, is we could certainly attempt to, if you will, shoehorn what is built on the ridge into the city's existing zoning code. I, at this point, it's hard to say what approach may or may not be, be more appropriate. Um, that's something I think the planning commission would, could be exploring. As to how the council could, could make this happen, the there is no development agreement for S R one. And so it is, you know, the, the because S R one is effectively built out at this point, the council could affect, could decide to simply move on from the next use final plan and, and impose new zoning controls because there's nothing else to get built. Um, there's certainly some additional legal things that we, that we would need to do as part of that. Um, but we could make it happen for S R one. For S R two, there is a development agreement that its term has not expired yet. It's got another I don't remember, Emily and I were just talking about this the other day, and now I can't remember the numbers. I think it's, it's, I got two or three more years to go. Um, so we, the city could not arbitrarily, just, you know, unilaterally move away from, from that development agreement, you know, tomorrow. Um, we would have to let it play out. Now that said, we are moving close, ever closer to the last developmental parcels in S R two being done. Um, the one in the southeast corner of Snoqualmie Ridge two, the, the S twenty-two parcel, uh, plat twenty-nine is currently having homes built. There's the active application on what was formerly the, the LDS church site, the Latter Day Saints church site, uh, along to Kobe at the bottom of the Big Hill. And then the, the last remaining one would be the vacant property next to the, the hospital there, parcel, what's known as parcel S twenty-one B. So we are quickly approaching build out in S R, in S R two, it will likely take the remaining term of the development agreement to, to get to that point, um, at, at which point the, the council could certainly be looking to to put some more traditional zoning in place, using whatever standards, um, would, would be appropriate. Sorry if that's a very long answer to your question. Hopefully I, I caught it all there.
No, appreciate it. One, one thing I would strongly urge is that we come up with a good definition of success because there's a pretty wide range between, on one hand, uh, policies and zoning and code, et cetera, that encourages it and saying that, no, we actually want X quantity um, to, you know, of the city to be like this, and we're not going to stop until we get there. Uh, so that is just one comment. I think a definition of success of the, you know, of this initiative being such a high priority is important. And then the second comment would be, a few years ago, there was a lot of, uh, focus at panorama being a foray into the affordable housing. And I, I would ask for lessons learned. I mean, did it, um, did it provide affordability to those residents that we wanted to? And, um, what worked, what didn't? Because that's certainly from a rental property was intended to do that. So, and but again, I don't, uh, I don't, don't obviously solve things here, but I believe that, um, you know, lessons learned on panorama and clean definition of what does success look like for the city in the next, say, five, ten years, uh, would be very valuable.
Certainly.
Any, any other comments on that? Okay. Again, I don't seem to have a copy of the agenda. What, what is the next agenda item, Jason?
Let me, sorry, let me grab it here. So the next, here, back to screen share this one. Um, so we just moved, moved through plank fishing priorities. The next one here is a site plan permitting code change introduction. And, uh, my apologies, we don't have, uh, any written materials for this tonight. That's all, you'll just have to listen to me talk some more. Um, move this out of the way. So, so right now in, in the city of Snoqualmie, we have various permits. You know, we have everything ranging from a conditional use permit to, uh, you know, we have design review, we have clearing and grading permits. What we don't have is, we don't have an, if you will, an overarching site plan development permit, uh, you know, something to say, if you will, be the container for all the other permits that need to accompany development of a particular site. So to use the example of the build, of the building that went through design review across the street, uh, that this commission's certainly familiar with. That building followed a, a process where, of course, the planning commission saw the historic design review. There will separately be, um, uh, you know, eh, what we, what this city calls engineering plan review. So that's the civil engineering review, uh, you know, for, for their, so, you know, utilities, the site grading, things like that. We have clearing and grading permits. Um, but what we don't, one thing we don't have that goes with this is, is a specific review of what, what uses are proposed in in a development, uh, and a way to just look at a site plan for a development outside of design review. So the intent here would be to, to create a process, and, and this wouldn't be something we're creating from scratch. There are many other cities that have a site plan review process. Um, you know, and including neighboring, say, Sammamish has one, Isiqua has one, uh, Eggswood, where, where the director uh, formerly worked, has, has one, Redmond has, has one. So we certainly have plenty of examples to pick this up from. Um, it's really a way for us to provide a more formal, a, a more formal approach to looking at developments and also, as I said, to, to help us combine. help us combine and track better the permits that are, that are necessary and, and, and that will be processed for any type of development. Um, so we're not taking anything away necessarily, there will still be design review for things, we're still gonna have clearing and grading permits where we need them. Um, we just are looking to create a process that, where we can, you know, write a staff board and say, here's, here's various criteria, you know, it meets this one, it's the, you know, for example, the use is allowed in the zone. This obviously came up in the course of the historic design review for the building across the street. There's a question of, well, are the uses allowed in the zone? And the answer effectively was, well, yes, they are. We determine that, the director does, but that's not per se written down anywhere. We wanna have a better process for that, so that we can say, yeah, we've determined that, here it is. Um, it also gives us a vehicle to where necessary, so for example, if a project needs a conditional use permit, um, to potentially consolidate some of these reviews in front of the hearing examiner, if that's the desire of the applicant, so that they, then, you know, if an applicant is gonna sit there and say, well, we need to have these four permits, and we don't wanna go to four different, different bodies for approvals, we can say, okay, fine, well, you're gonna take the whole thing to the hearing examiner, and, and that's how it, it can work, because right now, we don't have a great way of doing that. Um, uh, so that, that is another ultimately goal here for, for this. So as to a specific timeline, there's something we're, we're gonna be looking at over the next several months, I would say, there's a, there's a hope we can get this done with the planning commission before the end of the year, um, because it's, uh, across my fingers, relatively straightforward thing to, to do. Um, so look for this to come forward more, uh, excuse me, come forward in the near future here. I know that the, the next meeting, as you heard from the CD Committee Chair, uh, Councilmember Johnson, there's, there's the short course on local government planning, which is occupying this commission's next regular meeting on the nineteenth, uh, but we would hope to get this back in front of you in, in October for some, uh, so you had, with some actual language you could act, you could react to, and, and we could have a discussion about it, rather than just hearing me talk some more.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that point? All right, uh, uh, planning schedule, this is a topic I'm pretty happy to introduce. And um, one thing I met with our, uh, community development director and, uh, and Dylan, and we've uh, decided to try to give upon a commission at, uh, and then we, why don't you introduce this, really your idea, as much forward look throughout the year is what's coming down the pike is possible for both planning and setting expectations.
So what we have here, and you can see on the screen, I apologize, it's tiny, it's really hard to read, just because of, of how this is formatted. Um, what we're looking at is, is, is a schedule of things for the planning commission, and so we have here on the left, so let me make, I'll make this bigger, even though you won't be able to see it well. We have the, the conference of plan review, and these are some of the, the subtasks, if you will, underneath the conference of plans. We have the housing uh, the, the housing element, and so you'll recall, this commission heard a presentation recently about how the housing needs assessment is going. There's the land use element, and all these different elements. These aren't on the schedule yet, yeah, if I scroll over, you can see that they're not there, because we haven't scheduled them yet. The next one, we have, uh, design review or historic design review. Right now, we only have one project, the um, this is the Roundhouse project that the Northwest Railway Museum has proposed, so we have that tentatively scheduled for um, the, this kind of yellow color is discussion, and then this, when you have a, a red surround here is for a excuse me, I'll scroll down for a sec, this public hearing, and then the, this green is action. So we'd be looking to introduce that to you on October seventeenth, and then follow up with action on November seventh. And you can see, here's training, so we have, of course, the, the short course coming up on September nineteenth. Um, we'll talk more about this other training shortly. Um, then some other things, so we're talking about this planning schedule, uh, planning commission priority, priorities, downtown real look update. Then these are the other things coming, so the street use right of way use code amendment, this is something that we, that we looked at internally earlier this year. Um, you, you are all probably aware of during COVID, there were multiple efforts to create what, if you could call them streeteries, you know, using parking spaces for additional outdoor seating. Um, converting parking spaces into loading, excuse me, loading zones for, for curbside pickup of, you know, whether it's ordering out from restaurants for the various, um, you know, with the door dashes that were greeted to the world, uh, or just you driving down to pick something up. Um, and it's things like that. All the efforts the city is currently undertaking along those lines are operating under the auspices of the emergency proclamation, and that emergency proclamation is not going to last forever. Um, for better or worse, depending on your point of view, we are moving into, you know, the, the new normal of COVID, and we're not gonna have the emergency proclamation, so that leads to the question of, well, there are things that the city's doing in that regard, that we may want to continue. There are things that, that maybe the city should have a more formal process to establish, like what if somebody does want to take a parking spot for some outdoor seating? Right now, we kinda have a, we, we, we force it through the street use permit process, which is, which isn't really set up for things like that. Street use permit process is set up for construction projects, really, you know, temporary uses of the street right of way, and not so much these more permanent uses. So we had the idea of, well, let's create this, this better approach to street use. It um, hasn't gone anywhere because of competing priorities and lack of staff, now that we are back to a more fully staffed situation, this, um, it's something we're, we're going to look at bringing forth again. It's not on the schedule quite yet. This historic district appeal changes, this is the procedural ones I mentioned earlier in the meeting, and then the site plan code amendment, of course, we're talking about now. So what we'll do going forward is, you know, as we add things, we will get them scheduled, so you might see, we're gonna talk about the land use element of the conference of plan review at a future meeting. Uh, it's certainly not on here yet, but it, but it could be coming. Um, so, you know, this is, I would say, an early effort, we may tweak this, um, as you, you know, I don't even think any of you can read this right here, whatever this says, because it's so tiny, so that's what I'm saying, little bit, little bit of work might be, might be in order to, to make it a little more legible. Um, but certainly on your screen, you know, you can zoom way in and, and see what it, it says there, if I, if I zoom way in on it, so it, um, electronically, it's a little easier to use. Um, and then this, the, the second page is just how things spill over, we, we tried to, to show to the end of the year, unfortunately, on the page size, the, the, the later November, and then the December meetings um, ended up on a second page. This nineteenth of December meeting is almost certainly going to be canceled, because we almost always do that. Um, so we'll probably add that in a future update. But as you can see, what, the, the things that are coming up is, is of course, the housing, um, more work on the housing element, which you've already started, and then, you know, design review items, and, and some of these other code amendments. So we're, we're hoping to continue using this going forward to give, you know, as, as the chair was mentioning, it, the, give the commission a better look, look forward as to what's coming, and, and what things you might wanna be thinking about, because um, while these are all, of course, they're individual items, it's always helpful for the commission to be thinking how different parts fit, fit in with other parts, especially as it relates to the conference of plan, you know, you're, you will need to be thinking about how, how are the discussions you're having on the housing element, and the housing needs assessment fit in with the land use element, fit in with the transportation element? Uh, so being able to see a little further ahead as to what's coming will hopefully help the commission more think, think those connections through, instead of taking them as, as these one-off uh, items coming at you.
And just to add to that, I mean, um, this uh, relatively recent idea, and I, I know this is looking a bit rough, it's obviously formatted, it needs to be done. With the comp plan and the timing extended beyond a year, and a lot of activities feed into that, um, it seemed to make sense to map this out as cleanly as we can, to give everybody a heads up of, of what's going on, and uh, kudos to the uh, uh, committee director for, committee director for, um, you know, posing of, you know, let's go work on that. So this is a very first look at what um, I hope it gets much more populated in a format that we all could use. Okay? Any comments, questions? Okay.
Appreciate the look ahead. Very much.
Thank you, thank you. Good. So, uh, let's go to item number five, items of planning commissioner interest. So let me start with, uh, Commissioner Goodman?
Um, so just, just to clarify, our next meeting on the, uh, the nineteenth is just the short course I'm planning, and there won't be a separate planning commission meeting?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, uh, I'd be interested in an update, if there is one, or at a future meeting about the status of the, um, repaving of Snoqualmie Parkway. Um, I, I think we had some news last time that we got some funding in the state transportation package, so if there's any update on that, I'd be interested.
Certainly, um, you're correct, we, we got, um, funding from the state transportation package. As part of that, we are also looking to, um, I'm, I'm not sure of the exact right term, but it's effectively give over the parkway to the state as an extension of Highway eighteen. That would be, if, if you will, curb to curb, and I know there aren't curbs on all of Snoqualmie Parkway, but, but the, the driving pavement would, would be the, the state's responsibility, and the city would continue to maintain the areas outside of that, so the, the sidewalks and walkways. Um, because of that, the state will be managing the repaving project, and and with all the, the process that it, that is occurring with the handover and, and working through, uh, the state DOT's timeframe and planning for this, repaving is likely going to occur next year, and it's not gonna occur this year, we're already in September, of course. Um, that's why you saw some of the additional, uh, crack ceiling on the parkway, uh, to help preserve it for another year. Uh, we recognize it's, it's not, unfortunately, the smoothest driving surface, but it will hopefully hold it together. Um, through the winter, hopefully this, we used a different product this time that we used last year, which will hopefully not just peel up in, within the first two weeks. Um, uh, but certainly, the repaving, you know, should be occurring next summer. So that will be a traffic mess.
I look forward to it, thank you. Uh, and that, that's all for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodman. Uh, Commissioner Lambert?
Uh, well, two things, one is Snoqualmie giving up any control over the repaving of that street when we give it to the state? So we won't have any say over when it gets done, or?
We are certainly giving up some major of control and, and, and handing it to the state, um.
You know, the repaving on the rest of eighteen.
Yeah, um, I, I think I, I don't know how to phrase this, I, it's not so much the hope, but, you know, certainly, the, the state is so due to the ex- the expense involved, you know, we had to get five million dollars from the state funding package to do this at all, um, and the city was look, was looking at a, a bill in the five to six million dollar range to do it ourselves, which is a eh, for a city the size, that's a significant amount of money. I think that the hope here is that because the state frankly, just has a much bigger pot of money to work with, that they will be able to, um, keep it in a little better shape, um, and, and be able to deal with the truck traffic that is on the parkway. Um, you know, that has been an ongoing, uh, an ongoing issue for, s- s- ever since the parkway was built, that, that it's handling a, a much higher truckload than maybe anybody envisioned, and so with the state maintaining that, they will, they, they can accommodate that better within their maintenance program. Um, there has been greater attention paid to maintenance of, of the state highway system by recent legislatures compared to what legislatures say ten or twenty years ago were doing. So I think there's a hope that that will continue forward, but hopefully, after this repaving, we won't need to worry about repaving it for another twenty-five years or so.
Okay. Um, is there an update on when they're gonna finish the, um, medians on dune and maple? And all the vegetation work down here?
That, uh, that will happen this fall. Um,
Actually?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Um, i- i- if you want some more details, you should feel free to get in touch with Phil Bennett, he'll get, he will be happy to, to talk to you about all that, but um, planting in the summer is never a good idea, things tend to die, and so Phil was waiting for, for this fall, um, you know, it, what, once it starts raining again, he can really get in there and, and do it, and be sure the trees aren't all gonna die the second he walks away. Um, but yes, we're gonna get that done.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else, Commissioner Lambert?
Nope.
Uh, Commissioner, you left?
I think it is time, thank you so much.
Commissioner Smith?
I have any. No, appreciate it.
Okay, Vice Chair Testman?
All I would say is, uh, I would echo, uh, Councilmember Johnson's, um, uh, praise of the city and, and all the staff for making Snoqualmie Days awesome, uh, kinda in line with the, uh, eighteen discussion. Uh, I don't know if you saw it, those of you who went down there, but the DOT actually had a really awesome, uh, presentation, a booth there with, uh, with several engineers, and so it was good to, to hear from them and get details on uh, specifically the interchange project, and then what they're doing, uh, south of the ninety on, on eighteen, so I think some significant improvement's gonna come there, uh, not, not just repaving of the, of the parkway, so that's really exciting, but that's it for me.
Excellent, excellent, and, uh, uh, Jason, could you show the agenda and scroll up and just make sure I didn't miss any uh, previous, uh, agendas?
Uh, oh, Emily, I'm sorry, Emily, do you have something you wanna add?
Yeah, I, I just, um, thank you, Chair, I just wanted to, um, draw your attention once again to the short course on local planning. Uh, um, Councilmember Johnson mentioned it earlier, it is by registration only, so um, you'll need to actually go to the link provided in, uh, in the material that was provided to you, and, and get that registration going, and I would say that it is, um, going to be something that is probably more special than any other classes you could just take, uh, th- through the online Department of Commerce's website. Um, this is catered to the city of Snoqualmie, and, um, it's anticipated, at least right now on the agenda, that we have some special, uh, presenters, including Joe Tovar, who's known throughout the state, um, for his, his planning efforts, since had a number of different planning, lead planning, um, positions and jobs, uh, including, um, uh, the appeals board for the state of Washington, so yeah, I hope that everybody does go to the registration and, and sign up for it, it, we are looking for a hundred percent attendance on that. Um, I think you'll find it really enjoyable, and you can, uh, participate remotely on this, you, you don't need to be, uh, at City Hall for it.
Yes, I would like to echo that, the you know, training that we're getting with the importance of the comp plan is, is pretty rare, actually, to have something that, um, I believe it's gonna be an eighteen month process to go through, that we get to participate in that with a, a great city that we're all, you know, just, you know, very enamored with. So please, everybody attend that training, and if you can't do it in person, then please do it, uh, via Zoom, there's definitely, uh, definitely a lot of value there. So again, I'll echo that, we would look for a hundred percent attendance to that. And you do need to register. So. Jason, could you put the agenda back, and just scroll to the top, and just see if I missed any?
No, you, you didn't miss anything.
Okay, okay, I, I'd, I'd approve agendas that were previously approved, yeah. Their minutes were previously approved. Okay. Um, for my, I don't know, uh, planning commissioner interest, I just wanted to ask about the, um, I, I think it's, uh, the preschool right next to what used to be the IGA. And there's a huge fenced-in area in the parking lot, I mean, it goes down to the, you know, the, the goodwill turn-in stuff, you know, all the way up to the Dollar General, and takes out a big chunk of that parking lot, and they've munched up a lot of that concrete, so I'd just like to understand um, what's happening there, and what, um, you know, what additional is going in there?
Sure, so, um, a- as I think you all know, um, daycares, licensed daycares in Washington State are required to have um, outdoor play areas for the children, this, um, they, they, because there, there needs to be a certain amount of outside time. And so, and you see this in the other daycares that are, um, that are around Snoqualmie, so this facility will need to create, uh, an outdoor um, play area. So that's one thing they need to do, and so that's part of the, um, that is, that is part of what's going on. Second, secondary to that, because they will be, actually, let me screen share here, then you can see what's going on. So secondary to that, uh, that, so this is the, the site plan, this is the building itself, so, so Dollar General occupies this middle portion, um, Positive Allies over here, and Starbucks is on this corner, and so the, the daycare is going in this, this roughly third or, or, um, quarter of, of this on the, uh, north, on the north side. So what they're doing, they're creating this new five thousand square foot playground here, where today there are parking spots here, parking spots here, and then this, this parking area actually extends out into here a bit. So what they're having to do is construct this playground, and then reconfigure some of these, this, this portion of the parking lot right here, to allow for the drive out to shift over. Now, yes, they're losing some parking spots in the process, um, we had them do a parking Um, we had them do a parking study, which was then reviewed by the city's outside uh traffic consultant to um, you know, to to make sure it was appropriate, which they determined it was appropriate. So parking will be tighter in uh in this lot, following it, but they they're, the study shows there will be sufficient parking. Um, so what you're seeing is the temporary construction impact of they're having to fence stuff off so that they can do this construction work to to move these these parking lot islands back a bit and create this playground.
And the fencing, um, this is going to be bollards around there with moving cars next to kids that are playing. Is there going to be a see-through? Chain link fence or what what's the fencing?
Um, let's see here. I'm I'm looking to see what they're here. So here, here are the, the these are the renderings they provided and you can see these fences are are somewhat see-through, at least in in this rendering. Um, you know, which is relatively standard. So you'll be able to certainly see through a little bit. The fence is tall enough to prevent the kids from escaping. And and, you know, when kids are out there, they need to be supervised. So it's not like they're going to be unattended kids out there at any, at any time.
Hmm. You know, I always, um, I mean, I get it now. I'm just kind of surprised that it would be that that fencing, you know, you're in a moving cars on both sides of that fence, um, that that's really from a safety perspective.
Hmm, okay. Yeah, it I will say it it is common, if you look at the other, um, the other outside play areas at other daycare. So there's one um, on on, or really it's behind a better way. There there's one daycare facility there. They have their play area in the parking lot behind there, uh, you know, next to the fire station. That one does not, it has a fence, but no bollards. There's, I believe, the um po- Positive Allies play area, which is in the same parking lot on the other side. Let me go back to the sorry, go back to the other sheet so you can s- see. So Pa- Positive Ally has their play area over here. Again, it's fenced. Um, but but not, there are not bollards in the way. So it it is standard. Um, I I don't know exactly why it's it's, if you will, standard to have a fence and no bollards, likely because you're in a parking lot where speeds are lower. You know, if this was sitting right next to the parkway, you're probably going to need some more substantial barrier just for sa- for pure safety reasons. Um, been a parking lot, I think it's assumed speeds are lower and and cars aren't going to necessarily go crashing into fences. Um, you know, a- and and of course hurting kids.
Okay, well, I hope it's just well signed that you've got kids in there, but uh, okay. All right, I see what what they're doing there. Okay. That is all I have. Any other comments from the commission? Again, at uh six PM on September nineteenth, everybody register. Check your uh city email and register for that training. Before to have seen everybody there, either a person or on Zoom.
So the last thing I'd like to add, um, which we alluded to earlier, is the, this is a PSRC, it's called the Passport to Twenty Forty Four, the Conference of Plan Workshop Series. This is the way, and and we'll send this link around so you can all see it. Um, there are a number of, and so and so these are workshops put on by the Puget Sound Regional Council geared toward um, working on on the upcoming conference of plan update. These would be quite informative for members of the planning mission. You can see it, it talks about the primary um audience here is of course going to be planners, but it says elected officials, planning commissioners and others with a role are also welcome to attend. This will help give you some perspective on on regional, on regionally, what we are looking at with these conference of plan updates. And so there's one tomorrow for on economic development. Uh, you can certainly click on the link and register. So we'll send this out uh later tonight. And then there's upcoming ones on transportation, housing, equity, TOD and centers. And and there will be, as it says, there will be more coming soon. Um, so you know, coordination with tribes, critical areas, elected officials. So so
I thought we sent the leak out.
We did the EDC and I realized we never sent it to planning.
I think we did send it to.
We did.
Commission, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Well, hopefully we sent this. We'll resend it again just to make sure you all have it. Um, we do encourage you to part, to attend and participate in these uh to to the extent you're able, because they are going to be very useful. Um, background and perspective as the commission works through the the coming conference of plan uh update.
Good.
Sorry, that's the last I had.
Yeah, okay. And uh, items of the future schedule, anything to add from what we already covered?
No, nothing more to add. Thank you.
Okay. With that in mind, uh, move, we uh adjourn the meeting. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, hi, hi.
A meeting is adjourned, eight thirty two PM. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.